Change things and I lost my, I couldn't get emailed the word. So one Sunday afternoon, I'm talking with Amy and her hubby.
I was just wondering if you were coming?
On the phone.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yes, got it set up.
Yeah, she did.
Do you want this chair?
Do you go?
It leans way back, I'll show you. I'm gonna fall asleep, do you want this chair, I'll show you.
Nothing yet, problem?
I thought you said it's your chairs?
No.
Like, this is your chair, go ahead.
How's it going?
This is a way, way back.
How you doing?
It's short legs, I'm sure we're like putting down. I wish I could. Think you're wearing a mustache?
That should be a proper game off the park.
And the water is crazy.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I really wanna get out.
I have twelve zucchini on the table.
Does anybody want me to put the minutes up or?
Anybody do the minutes?
All right.
You weren't here last time.
No.
No, we're both guys. That's for that.
Looks not coming today?
Next door.
Always next door.
Just whistle at him.
What's that?
Just whistle at him, like a dog.
Thought they heard his voice. Are we close enough? There.
It's official.
It's official, okay. Got it, we're all here, we got a court, it's all me to order. A motion, can we have a motion for the previous minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes.
Any moves to approve, is there a second?
All second.
Doug seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Regular agenda. I would like to make an addition, I wanna discuss uh city initiated zone change. So with that we have a motion to accept the amended agenda.
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
If Julie moves to approve, is there a second?
All second.
Amy seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you're up.
Okay, so, MD one, what you have before you is an application for three items, a plat, zone change, and a future land use map change. With also a possible amendment to the comprehensive plan to add a new future land use designation. So we received an application from Eagle Ridge Developments on behalf of Maple Lakes for a re-plat of Maple Lake Estates. For the southwest portion of the existing plat of Maple Lake Estates. This plat would just propose to change lot boundaries and take sixty existing lots and create twenty additional lots for a total of eighty lots. Basically, the plat would just be altering the lot widths, not the lengths. And this would not alter any of the infrastructure that's already been planned with the first phase. The applicant has stated that this request has been made for several reasons, including creating housing market diversity with a different housing type, offset property felt cost to take the properties out of a one percent chance floodplain and to reduce special assessments. So as part of this proposal, the lots wouldn't meet the current zoning district minimum lot size requirements. So the applicant is requesting to change the zoning from R four to R six. So that it would meet minimum lot size requirements. In addition, our feature land use map, as you see on the top, the current map, it shows that it's suburban, which is kinda characterized as low density, single family residential. With the suggested densities for this feature land use map type, these lots would not fit that criteria. So what I have proposed today is a feature land use map change. Obviously, this can change as we go through our discussion today, but kinda what I have on the table is kind of a more holistic approach. Rather than just covering the southwest portion of the existing plat area, I would suggest that we would expand westward along the Hundredth Avenue, which is this corridor you see right here. And just, if we're okay with this type of smaller lot size, that maybe we'd wanna see that for this whole area. And then, of course, during our last conversation, when we talked about feature land use map change, we discussed creating a new feature land use map designation called intermediate. And that would just kind of signal or represent our intent to create some sort of buffer between compact development and suburban, I should say, compact development, feature land use type, and suburban feature land use type. So that we can, when we guide development, that we show that there's intention, that we wanna see some sort of transition between those different land use types. So if you were to go forward with that today, then I do have suggestive language for the intermediate type. We already looked at this two weeks ago, basically, you know, we're stating that we'd wanna see single family detached homes on medium sized lots. That would fall between these two categories. And that would have a density that would kind of create some sort of transition between those two feature land use map types. So staff sent out notice to abiding property owners within three hundred feet of the affected area. Staff hasn't received any comments to date, but I do believe we do have some residents who have, would like to provide comment. Staff feels that this meets all of the, complies with the twenty forty-five comprehensive plan. One other thing I would like to point out, though, we kinda caught this late in the game. State statutes state that if you are plating in the floodplain, that you have to provide for two foot contours and benchmarks on your plat. So staff would offer a recommendation of approval with the condition that if this were to receive approval, that we receive a new plat document that shows these benchmarks and two foot contours. And then, of course, during our improvement district agreement, we would ask for a LOMAR to take that out of the Hundred Year Floodplain. So that whoever develops these lots wouldn't have to meet our floodproofing code where we have requirements for lowest opening and some other things.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, the original part, the north, the north section of this and the, that east street. Do they have the contours for those?
I'm not sure, I just know that under North Dakota Century Code, it states that if you are plating properties within the floodplain, that A, you're supposed to show it on the plat, show where the Hundred Year Floodplain is located, and then provide contours and benchmarks.
Okay. I know they've LOMAR'd it, I drove it the other night.
And unfortunately, this area is not LOMAR'd at this time.
The area, the area they're talking about building, no, it isn't. The rest of it is. Okay, opening the public hearing. Everything we're talking about here. Anybody here for it? Please.
My name's Jody Burnham, yes, we live behind the new section that is gonna be going up, so.
Behind?
Behind the second section, so we're at one oh six, one three, which is probably your, well, we're right on the corner of the intersection now of Seventy Second and Hundred and Fourth.
Okay, down there at the bottom of, the bottom of this?
Yes.
Yes.
So when, when he had the previous screen pulled up with the colors on there?
Go ahead and do it.
Um, the other one.
Your uh.
That's, that's the one. So in layman's terms for me, when you're talking that, the pink section there, your transition piece, what exactly does that mean? And how do you entail that actually coming to fruition? What's, is there actually a plan?
Okay, back up to the plat. Okay. The you see where you'd be located? The R four lots on the, the, those, the, those two strips of lots on the right side? Those are staying R four, those aren't shrinking.
So what is the lot size currently?
Seventy five feet.
Seventy. Yes.
Yeah, I believe they're somewhere seventy feet and eighty on the corner.
Yeah, it's eighty down on the corner, yeah.
So are those three stall garage approved, or only two stall?
Three.
Okay, how deep do they go?
The ones backing up to your lot are a hundred and fifty feet deep. The ones backing up to, on the other side of the street, I believe are a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and fifty feet deep somewhere in there.
And are those also seventy five to seventy?
Those are existing, they're seventy foot wide, and they'll stay seventy foot wide. We're not replating those lots that back up to your, to your house.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, nothing that backs up to your house is changing from the original plat. That's not on this plat.
It's just shown there because they're existing lots.
Okay.
Yes.
So those lots are unimpacted, and they actually have improvements in them and street in front of them already.
Yes.
Okay, so then, one of the questions I have when you talk about how you're gonna divvy up those specials, everything obviously is blacked out now, curbed.
Okay.
Lights are going on.
Specials do not get discussed at planning a zoning ever, we have zero to do with it.
Okay, the reason I brought it up is because when you said you're going to be rezoning the mapping, that is to disperse those specials, so.
No. Okay. Their specials over there, again, will be set at a much later date. Where's the boundary for those specials?
So for, for Maple Lakes first edition, it'll be the entire development. And I think it was a little bigger to include storm sewer to the north of it.
Goes from Casco seventeen to the river on the north, and then to the south to the city limits, so it includes everything from.
So, so that's the district boundary. Property in that boundary can be assessed if it receives a benefit, it doesn't necessarily have to be assessed. But for most of the, or I should say, for all of the street sidewalk, stuff like that, that'll just be tied to the development itself. So like, your property would not be included in most assessments, because you're not benefiting from, from that. But what's being discussed tonight is just, can't you see how it's more bold? That's all that's being discussed tonight, and that's the second addition, so all they're doing is just changing the size of, of those lots. And so that, that property will likely have an additional assessment district once this is built out. And then that assessment district will likely just take those, those properties and will not touch your property.
Perfect. Do you have anything else?
Yes.
My question is, why do we, my name's Phil, and it was, it was plum three. Why are we going to a higher density and sticking with the R fours to throw up the whole development there? And then, second of all, on a side note, we have a new street sign on the north side is a Hundred and Fourth. We live in a Hundred and Sixth, one oh sixth, my neighbor's to the north of me is one oh five.
Okay, we don't, we're not addressing addresses?
Well, it's a street, that's why I'm asking.
That, that issue has been brought up already, I think it's.
That would rather be City Council.
Yeah.
And it should be a Hundred and.
That issue has been grabbed already.
Should be a Hundred and Sixth.
We're getting the information now, and that's why.
Yeah, that was brought up at last Tuesday's City Council meeting too.
Yes.
Cause I think it should be a Hundred and Sixth.
Yes. Yeah.
It's planted as a Hundred and Fourth.
Yeah, it was, it was planted a long time ago, it's a Hundred and Fourth, but.
Okay, streets have changed.
Yep.
We do it all done, but again.
That's fine.
Okay.
I have more of a question on why are we looking at a more high density, is it just bigger than R four?
Want to answer?
Yeah, I can answer that, there's a couple of reasons. One being adding another type of lot size out there opens up the type of buyer that could potentially come by a new single family house out there with seventy foot wide lots. Regardless if you put the same house on the seventy foot wide lot as you do a fifty five foot wide lot. The special assessments are inherently gonna be quite a bit bigger on the seventy foot lot. In addition with lift stations that are out there, it's based on the number of services, so by going to a few more lots in here, we're able to reduce the, the special assessments on the existing boundary, because we have more sewer connections to the lift station, for instance.
Is the first edition what size lots are load?
Seventy, seventy foot wide lots. And again, we're not touching anything within really three hundred feet of your guy's house, everything's unapproved and further to the west.
What are, what are all the widths, tell them what the widths are on these new lots?
So they're between fifty-two and fifty-five feet wide on the internal, and then on the internal lots, and then as they are on the corners, they're a little bit bigger on the, on the, to account for the bigger side yard setbacks. They're the same depth, we're not reducing the depth, so they're still gonna have nice size, not as nice as your, they're still gonna have relatively nice sized yard. So it's not, the backyards aren't as small as you see in some other communities in Fargo, West Fargo, where you're at a Hundred and Twenty-five or Hundred and Twenty-Foot Deep Lots.
But you're proposing to put them all like that with correct?
Yep, yep, so the, we'll call it the Phase One, would have seventy and eighty foot wide lots, and the Phase Two would have fifty and sixty foot wide lots. So we've got this range from fifty to eighty foot wide lots, where the home builder can work with the buyer that maybe wants to live in that neighborhood, but can't necessarily afford the specials on the seventy foot wide lot, but maybe can do on a fifty-five or sixty foot wide lot.
But the houses would be the same.
They'd be very, they'd be very comparable, yeah.
So the look is not gonna change?
No, they're, they're just.
These are ever grass.
Yeah, there just would be more homes on each block.
Well, with the fifty-five, I can be able to do a three stall garage.
What are the side, what are the side difference in those?
For R six, five.
They would be able to, we've, there's other neighborhoods we've done, I mean, there'll be some two stall garages, but on a, on a fifty plus foot wide lot, that seems to be the magic number for builders to be able to get a, a three stall garage with either a two story or, or main floor.
On a fifty foot?
On a fifty-two, fifty-three foot wide lot.
So me selling real estate, we tell, we've basically been telling many buyers that unless they have seventy-five foot, they're not gonna get a three stall garage, that's what most builders are telling us to tell them.
We, I know, I, we have, we have developments throughout Fargo, West Fargo, where we've got even smaller fifty foot wide lots, and we have three stall garages on those. Not all of them, but I know some people prefer to have a two stall, but you can't get a, you can't get a three stall garage on it.
How does that work for spacing between driveways for parking?
So there ends up being, there ends up being, depending on the driveway configuration, usually you at least have one stall per lot on street parking in addition to the driveway. That's how it works out, cause you have about a twenty, twenty-eight, one, one vehicle width.
Okay.
Between driveways. So, so you'd have, and that's like a worst case scenario, so if you had two, three stall garages where they kinda taper in right next to each other on each side of those, on each side of those driveways, you'd have the ability to have on street parking.
You would?
Yes.
So it's a little very similar to some of the Ico developments of the fifty side.
No, those lots I think are, are a little bit, some of them are a little bit smaller than fifty-two, fifty-five foot wide lots. Where you run into the problem with on street parking is when you start getting below that fifty foot wide lot, because then you don't have, you literally don't have room for a driveway plus a parking stall in front of each house. You end up with just a whole bunch of driveways lined up.
Right, and a lot of times you end up with a smaller sized double garage, which fairly fits the two, two vehicles that you own today. They don't typically really fit inside the garage, so you do end up with a lot of exterior parking.
And there's, there's driveways in front, no different than any other garage, they have driveways in front to be able to park if they're not parking inside their garage.
Right, but most of those developments end up having more cars on the street, and I'm wondering what the horse zoning commission is looking to do here? As we are looking to develop the area, we've had developments, we're going from, yes, I understand, Verda, bigger size, and that's why we bought, when we bought, and why we bought it. But my wife and I have been in this business for many years, in building and real estate business. And that density ends up being more on street parking, because they are more than one car. Probably three to four, if they're anything like our family. And so they even have all this on street parking there, it's very dense. And I'm just trying to figure out what the horse, City Council or zoning commission is looking to have here, and why we need to get in such a dense population. I understand, development, fine, we got a housing, but does it have to be that dense? Why can't we get a better look? I see no green area in this new area. I see no, I mean, there's nothing there, other than you could just as well put a park next there.
Uh, actually can't, but.
I understand the technical, but that is the look you're getting. So why are we looking at something like that and not keeping it at a R four, at least? That's the one you have on our buffer, right?
Uh, currently have.
Okay. What is the city looking for?
The city let me put it this way, the, the minimum lot size for R six is forty feet, forty foot lots. We actually have some of those in the city, really don't like them, okay? When a developer comes with a plan that has fifty, or in the corner lots, sixty foot lots in an R six, we're actually pleased that somebody isn't building something at the minimums. In fact, we've had longest, other developments, we have held the develop, we have held up the development in order for them to mix the lot sizes, so, so they don't put everything in at minimum. Frankly, when they came with this change, we were tickled pink when they first did Maple Lakes and it came in as R four, the seventy foot lots. We also know what the, the costs for infrastructure have gone, gone ridiculous. The special assessments on a seventy foot lot are probably another thirty or forty percent higher than on a fifty foot lot. It's just the numbers, that's how it works. And these minimum size houses are gonna go for what? Two hundred and seventy-five, three hundred thousand dollars?
I'd be surprised if they could build a house under three hundred thousand dollars, I mean, it's.
That is.
That's really tough, and, and, and to your point, I mean, we, if there was a different, if, if there was a different zoning district that wasn't R six, we wouldn't have been asking for R six, but there's nothing in between for us to say, we don't, we're not looking to do forty foot wide lots. Those are, in my opinion, those are too small, they wouldn't blend in, you can't, there's difficulty parking them. Fifty-two, fifty-five foot wide lots, they're, they're a really good width to be able to get a lot of the onsite amenities that you see with seventy foot lots for parking and those sorts of things, being able to do a three stall garage. What you're able to do, though, is you're able to reduce down the cost for the home buyer. Now, instead, if they couldn't afford it on a seventy foot lot, they can afford it on a fifty-five foot lot, because the special assessments are less, like you mentioned. Thirty percent less, twenty-five percent less. That's what we're looking to do, we're not looking at forty foot lots. But gives you what, a thirty, thirty foot wide house, that's, that's, that's a two stall garage and a front door.
The other thing is we actually don't get to we haven't been able to tell developers that, okay? You have to do everything the way exactly all of us here who've lived here for a long time want. I live on a bigger lot than you, I think. I've got nine and a quarter acres. I'd be tickled pink if the next thing that comes, gets built next to me is fifty-two foot wide lots.
Why?
Why? Because I don't want forty foot.
So why can't there still be a seventy foot?
You've got seventy, you've got seventy foot next to you.
That's next to me, but the whole, the rest of the development is not seventy foot. It's the look of the whole development. Again, in this next edition, I'm not seeing any green space in there, where I think the first edition we have retained.
Yeah, we had the detention ponds and, and when we worked with, there was already a previous agreement in place when this property was acquired for park dedication, so that was already, that's already been addressed with the overall plat for the entire thing, so. You know, as of now, there, there wasn't any green spaces for park plan there, and with this there is. I understand, I mean, like I say, I think that's why, if there was a different district, if there was a, our, if there was some other district that allowed for a fifty foot wide minimum as opposed to a forty foot wide minimum, that's what we would've come in and asked for. We're not looking to go to forty foot wide lots. You know, we could've, the way that the math works out with creating them, we could've tried to sneak it in and get a little bit less than fifty foot, but we, fifty foot for me is a magic number, that works out really well, it's worked out well on other developments that we've done throughout, throughout the community, when you get a little smaller, it gets to be a challenge.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, closing the public hearing. Now, how many things have we got going on here? We've got re-zone, plat.
Future land use map change.
Future land use map and comprehensive plan.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So the future land use map is currently in R four, correct?
The future land use map is currently suburban, the yellow color you see on the top there.
Okay, define suburban.
Suburban just characterizes low density, single family residential development. I, I don't remember what the density is for, but suggested zoning is RE to R four.
RE to R four on, on suburban.
So is that the diversion that's going through there?
Correct, this, this green color is the diversion right here. This is Maple Lake Estates up in this area. This is Country Acres.
Yeah. So it's the diversion, and then on the other side of that is agriculture, correct right now?
Uh, this is also agriculture minus this, that's what division right now.
And the reason that intermediate is in there is because that's what we've been proposing for the buffer, correct?
Correct, yes. Correct, yes.
Then intermediate would basically turn out as the, what's it have, R-one to R-four kind of thing? Yeah?
And to the north of that, on one-hundredth that?
The other side of the, the other side of one-hundredth is Fields.
Field, okay.
For right now.
Okay, yeah.
And then there's houses back there.
And then that, that back there, what is that?
Those are all large lots with subject systems.
So this is really an area that we want to have high density, because that's what this is?
High density doesn't seem to fit with all the other larger lots in the area, and... I live in that area too, so...
And I think that's why our future use map did not include high density. Because we have a lot of agriculture in our city limits still, and we've designated other areas that are high density. To get the mixture, because I agree, we need to have high density, because we need to be able to have starter homes in our community for young families, we need to have retirement home capabilities for people to downsize. We need, we need to cover it all. So we need that within our city. I'm not arguing that.
So we do not have a blend of the intermediate and compact, do we? To where you could actually vary the lot sizes, or you could go with a seventy-foot lot, and then go two-fifty-foot lots around a seventy-foot lot. I mean, that would help with your assessments, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it never really got dissected that far, they're just kind of overgeneralizations of, uh, development in general that would like to be seen in certain areas of the city, so...
Because we have talked a little bit about varying lot sizes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
To help with some of that too, like...
And that's one thing, not to jump in, I know it's not open right now, but that's why we're trying to, you know, create that blended along the outside, so that there is that kind of transitional, but still able to have multiple lot sizes within that community to give options, so it's not all just one lot type all the way throughout.
But I think what we're trying to avoid is what a lot of people have termed as cookie cutter lots that are like, you know, ten in a row and street after street. To be able to have diversity within that, so that you can have parking, you can maybe have two cars parked end-to-end rather than just one between each house. So it would give kind of a mixture look, which is, I don't know if I even, I don't know if we see that in Fargo, West Fargo, whatever, but we're not them, so we're trying to come up with a method of maybe having an average-sized lot, which would mean you'd have to have some larger lots and some smaller ones. We're in the, we're in the process of trying to redo all our ordinances, so that's something that we're starting to discuss.
Well, that would help break up the street, because you'd have varying green space between the homes.
Right.
And...
Is it possible to pull up the, the PDF of the map and zoom into that, the, the lots? PDF of the plat itself?
Because what, what's your setbacks, they're five feet?
Side.
Side, right?
In R-six, side yard is, is a minimum of five feet.
Coming up, or are you looking?
No, just the actual plat that we have.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And what is the setback in R-four then?
Eight feet, did you guys just switch it to eight feet?
Yeah, we just switched it to eight.
She basically has sixteen feet behind her.
In R-four, uh, as, as a minimal, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the one we have submitted, sorry.
The one you had up before?
Just kind of zoom, maybe zoom in on a hundred and third street, so you can see lots on the north and south side of that. Kind of see some of those dimensions, I mean, like I say, we're almost, you know, we're fifty-one feet on the south side, we're fifty-six, so we're kind of getting that same thing that you're talking about. We're going fifty-one to fifty-six to seventy to eighty, so we, we're kind of, like what you guys are talking about, we're kind of meeting within it, it's just tough with the existing zoning ordinance, I can't... A, I don't want to go back and, and replat lots that already have improvements on them or do anything like that. And I don't want to replat anything against existing properties, but, you know, we're, we are blending from fifty-one to sixty to seventy, so there is a mix of, of different lot types within this development. And we tried to, we tried to keep it as, you know, keep it away from the existing properties that were already there, so that there was that buffer, like, uh, what Barrett had kind of shown from the zoning perspective.
I understand that too, but you're still, we're still looking at going to an R-six, so your setbacks are still going to be five feet versus eight feet. So you're still gonna put a pretty good-sized house on there and only have ten feet between the homes versus the wider, you know, like an R-four, you're gonna have the eight-foot.
And, and that R-four actually, builders are creatures of habit, and that R-four gets to be a little bit of a challenge, because that, that eight-foot setback is, well, before it was eight-foot and twelve-foot, I think is what it was. Really throws them for a wrench, because it's just different than what they're used to. Typical side yard setbacks are four, typically are four or five feet, depending on the community. And again, R-four is a little different, but, um, you know, that, that also, you're also assuming that they're building footprint to footprint. And on a forty-foot wide lot, they are. On a fifty-one, fifty-six foot wide lot, they still have extra room generally on the side, so there is extra room, again, on the street for parking and those sorts of things.
That's why we have five and eight-foot setbacks, is we don't want to be like everyone else.
Yep.
So...
I understand.
Five to eight, with the bigger lots also, with the bigger setbacks also bringing in different builders. They have a variety of builders, not just certain lots, because of this part of the area. You have certain builders that build these types of lots. Of course, you'd have the variety that you're talking about, it's a certain lot size, you'd have more diverse builders that come in. Vitals lots that build different types of lots, so you have a greater diversity in the whole style.
You wouldn't have the cookie cutter lot.
Yeah, right now to get that mix, we end up having to do spot zoning on different lots, because I don't think there's anything in the, uh, that would allow us to do that proportionally within a block, so...
No, actually there is. In an R-six, you can put a set, you can put a hundred-foot lot in there if you want.
Yeah.
Those are minimums.
I get you.
Those are minimums.
You can make them as big as you want.
More questions? That, um, that zoning map, it showed a buffer there, but didn't show the buffer on the top side.
Right.
Good point, it's kind of... Are you asking my thoughts on what else on by the...
Northwest corner, you know, that's yellow, and there's no buffer between that. Northeast, I should say.
Oh.
So is that the current Maple Lakes Estates development, that yellow?
Correct, yeah.
That's a portion of it. Or perhaps it probably is.
Yeah, what I'm trying to capture here is, this proposal would fall right near... And then, uh, compact development would basically suggest that type of development for that area. So, I'm leaving it up to the planning commission, whether they just want to own it on this area, if they want something more holistic that covers the whole area. I'm really interested to hear your thoughts, and how you'd like to move forward.
I'm not crazy about taking the whole, that whole area butterscotch.
No. I don't want that.
It just seems like a weird area to have high-density houses, because nothing's out there, and you're not just gonna have a lot of commercial out there, you're not gonna have schools out there, usually have that depositing on that.
So then we're gonna just have a little pocket of high density? It, it just...
That doesn't mean either.
It doesn't make sense in my head. I totally get what you're trying to do, I get that you want to try to hit a price point with your homes. It just doesn't seem like this is the area of city to do it in. I don't know, what do the rest of you think?
I, if, if it's gonna go to an R-six, there needs to be a variance in lot sizes compared to just fifty-one, fifty-five-foot lots, and then you put all those homes in, because regardless of what you make that lot size, and you make it an R-six, you can put a big home as you want on there, as long as you maintain that five-foot setback, you can cover that whole thing with the house. And a builder's gonna put what he can put on there to get the most return on to that property, so...
Yeah, Steph was, that's not necessarily a bad thing either, if you look at property tax revenue, uh, that would generate higher tax revenues, so... Special assessments, having more lots would break up those costs more, so, uh, there's a lot of pros and cons.
Okay, let's pull this down and separate it then. And let's start with the future land use map. What do you want to do there?
I don't want to do anything.
Yeah, I'd like to leave it suburban.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Let's break them up and take them, take them separately.
So, just a second, though, right now, is some of that, it, it's shown as suburban, but it's actually almost as intermediate, correct?
Uh, the proposed plat?
Yeah, no, what's, what's already approved out there, correct?
The approved plat, that's already there.
Yeah, it's already approved out there, well, it does follow the guidelines.
It does follow the guidelines of suburban.
Pull up the com- pull up the comprehensive plan in the chart.
Yeah. I think it's at the, the very limit of the chart.
For some reason, page twenty-three sticks in my mind, but I, I don't know why.
You are correct.
Probably because you've looked at it a hundred times.
So these are the two different future land use designations, suburban, compact development, and then...
Okay, now go to the chart.
The table you're referring to is down here.
Okay.
So, suburban already shows a suggested zoning from RE to R-four. The current Maple Lake Estates addition is R-four.
So the current one fits, fits...
Correct.
Case, case you're curious.
Yeah.
It's one of the first questions I asked.
Compact development kind of kicks it over one from R-one to R-six.
Yeah, because as you can see, in compact, compact development, you can have, uh, the R-one, R-two, R-three, R-four also.
Right, but by rezoning this, or by redoing the map to compact, we automatically kick R-six in there.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Can we go back to that other, the chart that's giving the rough densities of...
Questions?
Why are we down readings?
With one to three units per acre, and so...
That's all our future planning.
We have, we have sixty-three acres out there, and I think that takes us to, yeah, that would put us right at, with the proposed plat, we were literally right at, I think, three units per acre for that entire Maple Lakes deal. The challenge we have is with the, with the R-four, we, seventy, seventy's the minimum we can do. So if the, if the growth plan isn't changed, seventy's the minimum, there is no ability to intermix inside that area. But we'd actually just be slightly, slightly under actually, because we have eighty-six lots, is that what you said, eighty-eight? Eighty-six or eighty-eight lots on the first phase, and I think we're eighty, is that right on the second phase?
Uh, on your second phase, it says sixty compared against eighty, but it's all, uh, I'm not sure.
That'd be, that, we'd still fall, like, the, the, the overall density for Maple Lakes actually still falls under that one to three units per acre. We're actually sitting at two-point-seven units per acre with this updated plat. So I'm, that's where, that's where the challenge lies, is that we can't, if we don't change the, the growth plan, we can't have a mix of lots, because seventy ends up being the, kind of, the minimum.
I think it's designed that way, on purpose, not have those smaller lots.
Well, let's have a motion. We're dealing now with the...
Changing the future...
Few, changing the future land use map, because actually that's the first thing that has to change to do this.
And keep in mind, the future land use map is just a guide.
I keep, I keep hearing that...
I know, and I keep stressing it, because I think there's been way too much focus on this future land use map in the past, I don't know how many meetings, and the main issue that I want the planning commission to focus on is the zoning map. That's the big map that we need to keep current, keep updated, and make sure that that one is, is in place, because that one is an ordinance that goes on the books, it has two readings. The future land use map is something that is discussed once a year, once every other year, and it's just, here's kind of an idea of where the city thinks the growth will occur in the city of course. You don't have to stick exactly to what it shows on there, it's flexible. Uh, again, and that's why I've been stressing out, I don't know how many times, that it's just a guide.
Just, just so you understand, I go along with him fully, now, listen to Barrett.
I agree with you that it is a guide, but it does state in the comprehensive plan that it is a policy. So I mean, it's not something that you could just completely ignore. Uh, yes, it is ambiguous, uh, to a certain degree, to allow that flexibility, but I don't think it should, it should be completely thrown out the window. It's definitely provided as a guide to guide your decisions.
Correct, and I'm not saying throw it out, I'm just saying use it as a guide. And maybe I can add to this a little bit, I can, I, I, I can understand your hesitation taking that...
I just want you to know that you're getting in on, on part of a longer, a much longer conversation we've been having here, okay? So, that's what's happening.
We've been part of this family and...
This, this, this is, this isn't the, the, the beginning of this conversation. This is a, a long conversation we've been having over a period of time.
Well, and...
Over years.
And that's one thing where, you know, I, I sense the hesitation, especially taking that large swath all the way over there and looking at that as high density, and maybe, maybe this is one of those cases where instead of looking at this entire area as a growth plan, let's look at just a small piece and take it on a case-by-case basis. You know, I'm, I'm proposing R-six, but I'm not proposing minimum R-six, and that, even with that little bit of R-six, the overall density of the Maple Lakes development still falls within what their, the goals are for the suburban residential. So instead of taking five-hundred acres or four-hundred acres or three-hundred, I don't know, maybe two-hundred acres and switching it all at this point, let's, let's just focus on this, this small little piece and leave the rest of it the same. And if someone else wants to come in, and they want to propose fifty-foot lots, maybe the zoning ordinance will have changed by that point, and, and that'll be able to...
So there's two things that happened with us allowing you to do that, we set a precedence, and, what was my second thing, I lost it. It, it sets up precedence if we let you in there with the R-six, and just because you're not doing the minimum, then others come around and they would, they could do the minimum. And isn't this considered kind of like spot, what's the terminology?
Spot zoning, it's...
Yeah.
The argument that anyone could have, though, is that it's been transitioning from east to west, and you're, you're transitioning into the higher density, from low density, then to the R-four, then to the R-six.
Right, so, I'm sorry, but you're falling into this category of, do we want to go there? Do we open Pandora's box? Do we allow you to do this? I get you're doing larger than the R-six, but then what about the next developer that comes, the next one? You can't control that, I can't control that.
Yeah, other than, you know, if you do pull that as an example, and I, I, again, I understand your hesitation, we aren't at the minimums, and we are...
I know you're not.
We are providing, so, so if someone says, will you allow this person to do it? We also aren't proposing the minimums, we're not proposing forty-foot wide lots.
I agree.
So, so if, as you come through and do growth plan amendments, it would be on a, almost on a case-by-case basis, and if someone came in and was proposing minimums or even more intense development, I'd still think, yeah.
But I think if we allow them an R-six, we can't tell them what size, the width of the lot is. If it has a minimum of forty, we have to allow them to have that, is that correct?
If you were to go forward with this future land use map change and change it to compact development, and someone came in with a plat after that, that is correct.
So there you go.
And right now, it's, it's zoned as an R-four, correct?
Correct.
So...
So, so do you need a motion of accepting or denying? So, so do you need a motion of accepting or denying changing it?
Yeah, I just need direction from the planning commission.
I make a motion to deny changing the future use map in that area.
Okay, Amy moves to deny changing the future land use map. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Julie seconds? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Very fast done.
Okay.
What's next?
The, okay, next, the, uh, comprehensive plan change. Not the zoning map, just comprehensive plan, okay. What we're looking at here, forget the title, Maple Lakes Second Edition across the top. This is, what we're talking about is having a buffer between suburban and compact for the future.
So, is this just creating this new zone called intermediate?
No, it's not, well, only for, only for the- It's not a zone.
Just a category?
It's just a category in the comprehensive plan.
So, it's just to create this category? It doesn't say we have to put this category in specific spots on the plan?
This doesn't go into the zoning ordinance?
Yep.
This is what-
That is correct.
This is what we talked about, like-
You're creating a new future land use map category, uh, but you are not locating this new category on the future land use map, got it?
We're just creating the category.
This was the buffer that we discussed before.
Okay. And for, it, it's under Maple Lakes, it's a state second edition, because that's the thing- That's the umbrella under which it's hiding right now, but this has nothing to do with Maple Lakes Second Edition. Is there a motion for this category for the comprehensive plan?
I'd move to accept this category for the com- comprehensive plan.
Doug moves to accept, is there a second?
I'll second.
Kim seconds, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next up. The plat. Is there a motion for the plat?
The plat is basically accept the fifty, the fifty-five foot lots, correct?
The, uh, the, the plat is actually gonna be in combination with R six. If you accept the plat, you're gonna accept R six. You can't, you can't have the one without the other.
I'd move to deny the plat.
Doug moves to deny the plat, is there a second?
I second.
Amy seconds.
Do you wanna say, provide your reasoning for denial, please?
To deny the plat, to change it to an R six with a five-foot setback.
Because?
Because, because it's currently zoned as an R seven, or an R four.
And it doesn't fit our future use.
Den- denying the plat because of the high-density lots or the, the narrow lots?
Correct.
Then moved in second to deny the plat. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay, now the zone. Is there a motion for the R six zoning?
Looking at us.
I, I can't, I move to deny the R six zone, is there a second?
All seconds.
Amy seconds. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What meeting, is it what meeting? This goes to city council now. That's up to you. Understand, we make, we make recommendations to city council.
So, as of right now, it's scheduled to be what the city council will be making?
Good.
Okay.
Second item on the agenda, we asked to table that, that was the future land use map change along Sixty-fourth Avenue. Uh, we had spoken to several property owners along the corridor, and they had requested a neighborhood meeting, and we wanted to honor that request. Uh, we'll be having that meeting here in City Hall Thursday at six o'clock. So, at that meeting, we'll have, uh, a lot of property owners present to discuss that proposal. So, therefore, we don't feel that it's ready to receive a public meeting at this time. I feel that after that public meeting, we'll have enough public info where we can bring something for the community.
Okay.
Uh, last item on the agenda is just a design-
No.
Or two more, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, other items, we have a design review. Staff received an application for shops on Brookstone, uh, as you recall, this is in Vista's third edition, um, in the industrial park. We've already looked at phases one through three, this would be best for. Uh, the buildings are pretty identical, this phase has seven buildings. Uh, the, some notable differences that we found with this phase rather than previous phases is that these buildings are proposed as storage for land use. Also, uh, we were told that no outdoor trash receptacles or mechanical equipment would be proposed, and the applicant stated that heavy equipment would be located in the storage chairs only. As you recall, those were all fenced in, uh, six feet tall and opaque. So, uh, I guess what staff is looking for, the, in your, uh, planning commission packet, I provided the review checklist, everything needs of our zoning ordinance requirements, the feedback that we're looking for is that the planning commission would like to impose additional requirements on this building for the application.
Show the, uh, the whole lot, the, uh, site plan. Who's, who's, who's doing this?
This is submitted by- Brookstone.
Brookstone?
Cause we already approved some of the prob- the buildings on this property, right?
Is this the same as the other buildings we have approved?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, it's pretty similar, just a little bit different context, uh, different land use, storage. And with this phase, a loading space was required that they have placed down in this area. So, the, the buildings that you see circled in red, those are the ones that have already been approved and the ones that are being proposed, so.
And they are the same?
Uh, they're, they're very similar.
Okay.
And in terms of history of previous reviews, um, I don't recall any additional requirements being proposed.
Any questions? Are you in on this?
I'm recusing myself.
Okay, Kim's recusing himself. Any other questions on the design? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Amy moves to approve.
I'll second.
Julie seconds? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And note that, put a note in that Kim recused himself.
I didn't draw that picture.
That's okay. Did it come out of your company?
No, that one didn't.
Oh, we just made a copy. Okay, now I wanna discuss. First of all, there's a copy of what the people of the state of North Dakota decided they needed to do about keeping the government in check for taking people's property. The, what the people, what, this was initiated, uh, measure, and the underlying portion down across the bottom was what the, uh, the folks added. If you're wondering why I'm bringing the subject up, it's, it's never been done before in the city of Porus that zoning change has been allowed without the landlord's signature. However, I've been informed that Lucas has let the city staff know that there's nothing to stop the city from making a zoning change, a city-initiated zoning change. In other words, they can come to my property and decide that they want to oh, change my zoning to, let's just get ridiculous, to, uh, something that they can-
Industrial.
Well, or they put a plaque on it. Or, they decide that my property would be a really good place to put city, the city new city hall on, and then while they're at it, they'll continue Lakeview through my living room as the future land use plan is. Now, let me back up and give you a little more history in, in the city of Porus. Several years back, we had to do zone changes, yes, zone changes for the properties along Main Street.
Yep.
Because they were zoned commercial and they had houses on them.
Right.
What's the problem with that? Somebody wanted to sell this house, and the people buying the house couldn't get a loan, because the zoning didn't match, didn't match the use.
Right.
So, what can happen here is the city can come along and decide that they want some property. Oh, let's say along Main Street, they wanna, they wanna appear. And even though the, the constitution says that the only reason you can take private property is, is necess- necessary for conducting a common carrier or utility business, you can't do it. You cannot do it to, it, to, for public benefits of economic development, including an increase in tax base, tax revenues, employment, or general economic health. Now, this doesn't say you can't make a zone change, but it says you can't take the property to do this. If you do make a zone change on someone's property, you have in fact taken that property rights from him. See, what I don't understand, Lucas, is how the city can do a zone change when it says you can't do this, you can't take someone's property just to increase your tax base, or for the public, well, any one of these things. Other than the fact that you need to run a power line? Or a roller?
What about a diversion?
Let's not even go to the diversion, because good heavens-
Well, I'm just asking.
I, I-
Where does that fall?
Outside of our bailiwick at this point.
Okay.
All I'm looking at is, the reason I'm bringing this up is because in the, uh, overview of, you know, that we got from our, uh, the folks working on our on our zoning regulation, they mentioned that this is a, this would be a good thing, city-initiated zoning changes.
Yeah, and I, I would love to discuss that, it sounds like we're talking about a multiple, multitude of issues here. So, I've already heard the discussion on spots zoning, does our zoning changes align with our future land use map? I've heard about takings, you know, are you, under land use law, does it fall under a taking? Uh, I'm looking at this document, it says taking private property for public use, well, the property, in, in some instances, could remain private, so. I, I don't know if this applies, I mean, I, I'm not a lawyer, I don't, I've never studied legal law, so, you know, uh, Lucas could be, uh, more of a expert on providing that information than I can, but I guess where this conversation really started, uh, that I had with the consultants, as I said, you know, so, you're gonna create this new zoning ordinance, you may create some new zones. Uh, also, I also see an opportunity that if we have to do city-initiated zoning, you know, first of all, is it permitted, how's it done, and what's the best practice possible? Cause obviously, you want to avoid adverse impacts to other properties. And one of the key benefits of the city-initiated rezoning is, as you know, we adopted the comprehensive plan. We had these small area plans where we're trying to build a downtown. One of the issues is, is if you leave it up to individual property owners to rezone their properties one by one, you kinda get this piecemeal ad hoc development that's not really cohesive. So, I asked our consultants, I said, in your professional opinion, what are your thoughts on this? What's the best practice? Should we let individual property owners individually rezone their lots? Or is it just easier, just, uh, rezone whole geographic areas that match up with our comprehensive plan? And I said, the, the reason why this really strikes my curiosity is because I know the city of Fargo, like, twenty years ago, and I'm not saying you have to be there Fargo, but when they were trying to rezone their downtown, that's exactly what they did. It's just a city-initiated rezon of their downtown area. I said, you know, should we follow a similar path if we're trying to create a downtown? Their response was, yes, it'll make it easier for the city to implement that vision and get that going than, rather than wait for individual property owners. Now, I'm not sure of the specifics, I'm guessing they're gonna tell me it's gonna be developer-backed expectations when they look at a zoning map. That kinda creates a guide for what the city wants to see occur on those parcels, so you could actually attract that type of development that you wanna see in that area. Obviously, you've mentioned concerns about rezoning single-family residential lots, there's definitely a concern there. I definitely wouldn't advocate for it, I think it'd be political suicide if the city wanted to take that on. I, I think that would make a lot of people angry and be really difficult to do. But, I'm thinking if we have some areas around town that are commercial, not residential in nature, that may be low-hanging fruit when we do this whole uh, comprehensive rezon of the city. Uh, I was told that there may be some new zoning districts that are created, and that basically, you're trying to align existing land use with that zoning district so that it matches. So, I, I don't think we're really trying to upend anybody's expectations of what, uh, zoning district requirements would prohibit on that site, but we're trying to complement it, complement our comprehensive plan. So, but, yeah, I'd be curious to know your thoughts, uh, you know, if you think it's a good idea, or bad, or why, uh, what recommendations you have. But, I, I would love to share our consulting.
If, if, if you wanna know where I'm coming from, I look at it from my own property. From my, from the property of my, of my standpoint. My property has a future land use map of, uh, let's see, how is that, public, uh-
Community focus.
Community focus. Okay. Now, if the city really decides they wanna push me on something, they'd go ahead and rezone my property. Because the city would like my property to put a street through. Because my property, uh, that's, Lakeview continuing north is, is the whole hinge of developing everything along Seventy-six. Because no one else is getting an approach off Seventy-six, other than Lakeview. Okay. Now, pick your own property, wherever you live.
So, what, what is your, what's the connection with a rezon and a takings claim?
I'm just, no, it's, it's not a takings claim, except you're removing, uh, uh, possible sale. You could rezone my some, my, my property into something where I don't get to sell it, the way I want- You could rezone myself, my, my property into something where I don't get to sell it the way I want to.
Yeah, so I, to get a takings claim, the government has to be either taking the property or restricting it so much where you don't have any use of your property anymore. So the argument that a rezon would be a takings, I don't think you'd ever-
I, I, I don't-
Never meet that burden.
I understand that, which is why, excuse me, the next piece comes in.
And then the other thing too, Chairman Zara, is, you know, still with any rezon that the city wanted to, they would still have to go through the public hearing process and get interested parties. So like, with your property, it's an opportunity to be heard.
And if enough people protest, then it takes a three-quarters vote of city council.
Yeah.
In other words, three people sitting at city council have to vote in favor of it. Now, I just assumed add this to the zoning ordinance. However, also keeping in mind that the city council can go, go, can turn it down. And then the city council can change it anytime they want. I'm thinking that what I'll need to do is, under our home rule charter, get a petition and get it put on the ballot and get it locked in for something that it takes a vote of the people to allow city-initiated zoning. I don't think any of us want to go there. The only reason I'm bringing this up is because, uh, legal says the city can. City staff looks forward to it, to the ability to do it. And the Constitution of the United States, basically, among other things, was there to support landlord rights. Now, have I stepped off the cliff?
Um, I would just like to point out though, if we read a new zoning ordinance, we have new zoning designations and we're abolishing older ones, without property owner consent, how would we make those zoning changes?
The only exception is if a zone is given a new designation or name in the zoning ordinance. However, such changes may not be made to subchange, to change the zoning without the approval of landowners in the zone. This is up for the lawyers to determine, and I want the lawyer to determine because, because frankly, you're against this.
I guess I'm just kind of concerned about opportunities being lost and-
You know-
And I wonder what those opportunities would be.
I'm not concerned about opportunities for the city of Horace being lost if they're lost because they were done at the expense of some landlords.
A lot of actions of the city are done at the expense of land, uh, landlords.
Oh, yes, they are. Trust me, I know.
One of the things that if you required the landlord to approve it, you would not get very far with the city. Uh, because that's gonna restrict, uh, all kinds of things. Like, I guess a diversion would be one, if you said that you can't put, you know, landlord says no, no diversion, and the city can't change that, and then they shut the whole process down. So that's, that's the argument that I guess I would look at.
No, that, that's under the takings, uh, that's under the takings argument. They lost that one.
No, I mean, if you have to have approval of the landlord for the city to do something on, on the land.
No, for the city to rezon. We're talking about rezoning.
Well, rezoning is-
We have never rezoned a thing in the city of Horace that the landlord hasn't signed off on. Everything that we have rezoned in the city of Horace, it's part of the checklist that is the landlord, has the landlord signed, is that not correct, Lucas?
Yeah.
Okay, we have never done a rezon, and every rezon we've done in the city of Horace with the exception of when we got a new zoning ordinance. Some of those were rezoned because the, the terms changed. I used to be large block residential.
Oh, this is a different designation in the zoning ordinance.
Yes, I'm now suburban residential.
So, so are you wanting us to, what, what are, what, what do you want us, what are you asking for this evening?
Sounds like I have homework to do, is what he wants.
Is that, is that, has affected eminent domain?
I'm just wondering what it is you want.
This does not, this does not affect eminent domain. This affects eminent domain.
Well, Centricode provides a process for utilizing eminent domains, so we have this contract.
Yes, this doesn't affect eminent domain at all. This only affects the zoning processes of the city of Horace as far as the city of Horace being able to rezone somebody's land without their permission.
So I guess, I, I, I mean, I understand what you're getting at. You, you don't want someone to just come and change it. Sort of like, so, so I don't really under, well, none of us understand, but I think that was the thing, that land where there's houses was considered commercial. So I don't know how those houses ever got there or how the zoning got changed there. So something must have happened there at that point.
Yeah.
But then we changed it back so that they could sell it because it is, they are residential.
It was a mistake in the zoning map, however-
Oh, is that what all was?
The zoning map is, is, is an official document.
Right, right. So, so no one did that on purpose? It was an error? Okay, I get it. Um, I guess I'm just, I'm not really, so, so you're asking Lucas to look into this? Because I, I guess I kind of agree with Barry a little bit in the terms of, we're redoing our ordinance and we may re, but maybe this is part of what you were saying, like changing it from saying a large lot to suburban instead. We've agreed that our zoning is kind of crazy. So we need to, we need to change it, and how do we change that and still hold the integrity of where everybody is zoned currently? That's, that's where the big issue is, right? Yeah.
No, I'm zoned suburban residential.
So-
So in order, in order to change the zoning on that, whoever was developing, wouldn't they have to come in and, and do the change? The owner of the property?
No, they, no, because the city can change it, change beforehand. The city could say, we really want this to be commercial, we're gonna change this to commercial now.
Well, I kind of, I mean, anyone who knows that-
So like if the city, like if the city did that, the property owner would be grandfathered into whatever their use is, so they'd, they'd be fine to keep utilizing their property. But the issue that Chairman is saying is if he wants to sell it, or you know, that one is an issue with.
But if he comes in with a PUD or something like that and comes with a whole different change, that's possible too.
There's gonna be a lot of hypotheticals with what's going on right now.
There's, there's a lot of hypotheticals. All I'm saying is, don't let the city initiate the change.
And the city hasn't done it in five years, so I, I just don't see the city going to your property and screwing you over because?
Well, let's say that, let's say that twenty properties, uh, went along with it and one didn't, you would be stuck.
Correct.
And not giving the city the ability to change that one property, the majority would lose out.
Correct.
Well, not necessarily, because that one property, you can go ahead and change it. But unless you're gonna take it by eminent domain, you would-
If we had, if you had this, you wouldn't be able to change it because that property owner wouldn't consent to that.
Yes.
Right, so that's what we don't want.
He also doesn't, doesn't have to be able, he doesn't have to sell it to the city then either, or to, and, and in fact, he can't be forced to sell it to a developer. That's, that's what actually drove this. I know the case that drove this in the state of North Dakota, I just from Jamestown. People just blew their minds over what went up to the state Supreme Court. What happened with forcing a sale of land to a, to a competitor. That's what drove that. All I'm saying is, if you're fine with, with letting the city have the capability, which they have newly discovered of initiating a zoning change and got legal permission to do it, then we do nothing.
So if this is, I understand your concerns. I just feel that-
I'm just using my property as an example.
I just feel that if this was something that happened a lot, other cities would have something like this in place.
No, they wouldn't. Fargo?
I'm-
Far, Far, Fargo? They're gonna roll over you anytime they want. They've demonstrated that time and time again.
In most cases, if a person comes and approaches them with a zoning change and it's, uh, uh, acceptable to the area and stuff like that, we're not approving. You know, we're not gonna not approve it.
If a person or the city?
If a person comes to the city and wants to change a zoning that the city deemed that this should be the zoning and we thought it was acceptable in that area, we would approve it.
You're saying that if a city, if, if, this, this, the city came and said they want to change the zoning on that person's property and he doesn't approve of it?
Well, I'm saying the person comes to the city-
No, no, we, we, we always consider the person, the landlord has the ability to request a zone change. Whether we give it or not, because it's a spot change, is something else. What we're talking about is the city coming and changing the zoning on your property without your permission.
Yeah, they've done that in the past.
Yeah. How?
Am I allowed to have Long River there? That's been changed a couple times. So they, they've changed it, but if I wanted to do something else with it, I would just request a rezoning. If there's no issue with it, the zoning, the city's gonna accept it, then it's not gonna cause any problems.
No, if the city has initiated the zone change for their own reasons.
Uh, not necessarily, because you can initiate a zone change that this is all high density over here. Somebody comes in and says, I want a commercial spot over here on the corner. And everybody looks at it, you approve it, it's fine, but you, you're not getting this.
It's not, it's not the landlords coming and saying, we want this change. It's the city saying, we want to change his land over there.
Yeah, let's say that, let's say that, let's say that that area there was high density and they wanted to change it to, uh-
The city wants to change it.
To low density. Yeah, maybe they wanted to change it to low density because it was high density. If they, if somebody else come back in and said, no, we want to change it back to low density from high density, vice versa, uh, we would look at it and, and decide whether that's acceptable or not, even though we did enter, uh, do the change and the initiative.
You know, I guess the city perspective is, you know, so in our comp plan, the old town, new town, we're looking at creating dense urban form. If we were to allow commercial zoning to exist where it is today, and we were to get building permit applications for those sites, we would have to allow them to build what's by right. It wouldn't match up with our comp plan, and we wouldn't end up with that urban form. So the whole thought process was, in those areas in our comp plan where we have dense urban form, we would change the zoning, the city-initiated zoning application to that zoning district that would result in that dense urban form. So that when we do get a building permit application, we have the leverage to say, yes, this is okay, or no, thank you, that's not gonna work. So then, that was kind of the whole thought process behind it. There is absolutely no interest in city-initiated rezoning of residential properties. Obviously, that would be something we'd want to stay far away from. That, that would be awful for staff and property owners in the city alike, so, uh, you know, our thought process was-
But you could.
Uh, but today we-
But, but you could. You have the power to do it.
But you're, you're talking about likelihood. So you have the ability, but then you also have the likelihood. Even though you have the ability to, there's also consequences too. So I mean, you know, as Lucas discussed, we have due process in play where you have a public hearing, we have citizen protest requirements. Policymakers, or the city council is elected, you might not get reelected. You know, there, there could be a lot of negative consequences. So I'm guessing in all likelihood, uh, I've never seen any city try to rezone residentially zoned properties just because of the havoc and the backlash that you would get. But I'm thinking, I, I would hate to see us pigeonhole ourselves by taking away that right completely. So if we wanted to start creating a downtown, we wouldn't have the ability to do that. It'd be based on the whim of the private property owner, whether they want to engage in that or not.
Whim of the private property owner? See, how about, let's just, let's just replace whim of the private property owner with the rights of the private property owner. That's the difference we have.
Yeah, I guess, you know-
It is, it is up to, it is within the rights of the private property owner to stand in the way of development that encompasses, that gets on his land.
Maybe whim is the wrong terminology for it, but you know, the, the goal wouldn't be to limit someone from engaging in commercial activity on their property that's already some commercial. It would be to restrict the building form that results from that development act.
Now, let's, now let me put this in context. We're just, we're discussing the future land use map change on the Sixty-Fourth Avenue. Some of the people are coming in Thursday night, they're fine with it. Uh, one of them isn't. And why isn't he in favor of it? And you? No, I'm on Sixth Fourth Avenue. Because, because if his neighbors all decide to, to go commercial, he doesn't, he doesn't want to have to go commercial himself.
I think he might restrict himself, I mean, if everything around him gets built commercial, who's gonna wanna buy it? That's not, it's just my thought, but-
That's a good example of, of restricting development where you got a, you know, a gap in the development that you want to see go in an area which really, that kind of, uh, you know, cracks up the city process, you know, a little bit.
I think it kind of, I can see where, if, if you wanna try to direct things within a city, like creating a new downtown, creating that path, it would restrict you from being able to do that. I, I get what you're saying, they could way overstep their boundaries and, and, and be kind of, you know, not, 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 not very democracy-like, but-
Government will overstep its, its boundaries?
Well, I'm just-
You bet.
Yeah.
But, you know, you could delve into that too. I mean, basically, uh, you know, if you're looking at a Supreme Court decision of, uh, the village of Euclid versus Amber Realty, I mean, that pretty much set the precedent that local city governments have police powers to enforce zoning laws for reasons of health, safety, and welfare. So that, that's kind of where that comes from.
Hey, that's, that particular, that particular, if I remember that right, that particular one was, was also the basis behind North Dakota's amendment to the constitution because the ludicrous Supreme Court basically forced someone to give up his land to another private developer. That was the Supreme, the US Supreme Court decision, which was, yeah, it ranks right up there with Dred Scott.
So, I mean, even right now, we have a zoning ordinance currently that enacts those requirements and we act and implement those requirements when we get building permit applications. So, you know, my thought process wasn't to basically pull the rug out from underneath somebody's feet so that they could no longer use their property for what they, expectations to use it for, but to change the zoning, to change the requirements for building forms so that future development were to come down the road that we can ensure.
Okay, so where do you, where do you, where do you foresee city-initiated rezoning happen?
Probably our small area plans for downtown areas. Probably along Main, uh, before Wall, and then, uh, probably in Lakeview, uh, if that were to come about.
Main before Wall, north or south of Wall?
Uh, south, so Main from south, or Main Avenue, south of Wall.
Okay.
So I was just thinking, you know, when I asked the consultants, I was like, should I let these property owners rezon themselves so that we get that outcome? Or should we do a city-initiated rezon, which I've seen happen elsewhere? What are your thoughts? And they said that there, there's more cons and, uh, there's a lot more challenges to letting individual property owners rezone to the desired zoning district that the, or basically to, basically enact or implement that building form that the city's looking for. So, uh, that was just kind of my thought process behind it. They recommended that if we wanted to go forward with that, that we should probably do that rezoning yourself just so that we can ensure that that building form type- just so that we can ensure that that building form type happens in that area.
See, when we, when we redid the, that house up on Main Street from commercial to residential, I should, it really had, should have been left, left as is. We did it as a favor to that individual because they had some loan issues, but that should have never been done.
Yeah, we, they had loan issues that they, they couldn't sell the house.
Right, to another residential.
Yes.
They would have had to sell it to commercial.
They, they couldn't get a loan on a, they, the buyers couldn't get a loan because it was zoned incorrectly.
Yeah, I'm guessing your consultants are probably not going to direct us to rezone residential properties. It's part of the existing commercial, not to a new zoning district where you're looking at more urban form.
So that property might be an exception. Because, you know, you start, say, say we started getting high rises and they, I'm just thinking of the high rise and all of a sudden you've got a single-family home right in the middle of them, you know, and you can't do nothing because of what he's talking about.
Yeah.
Well, we, I know an easy way to, to end the discussion. I move that we ask Lucas in the, giving wording to this effect. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Anything else?
I make the motion.
Okay.
Richard.
All in favor? Aye.